City Council, to begin I would call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you now join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call it please.
Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Weeblehaus.
Here.
Murin. Jackson.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
File.
Here.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with one change. We've had a request to remove item number sixteen from the consent agenda and add it to the full agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
I would look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Right, that takes us to item number sixteen. Entertain a motion to consider acceptance of a grant for the East Benjamin Avenue Connector Trail Project and authorizing the mayor to execute all related documents.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay. And Steve, could you give us a little background on this, please?
Mayor and council, the county is currently in process of preparing plans and specifications for the reconstruction of Benjamin Avenue from Victory Road east to Highway thirty-five. As a function of that design, working with the city and with Northeast Community College, there was a desire to get the bike trail extended from Victory Road out to Highway thirty-five and tie it into our existing trail system out there as well. We would go from Benjamin Avenue south and connect it into the trail that's currently been constructed along Victory Road there and then going south all the way down to Norfolk Avenue. We had submitted for a grant last October, September, October. We are, again, we're in partnership with Northeast Community College. They are contributing three hundred thousand towards the project. The project has a total cost of around seven hundred and fifty thousand. We've received a grant for two hundred and fifty thousand and then the city would be responsible for the remaining portion. So the fact that the county is grading out the Benjamin Avenue piece is going to allow us to get that in at a substantially reduced cost. They're doing that as a function of their grading project and so for the majority of it, it would just be a matter of the paving costs associated with that trail project. There will also be a ped button crossing at Highway thirty-five so that pedestrians could safely cross the Highway thirty-five corridor and then again we'll tie it into the Victory Avenue Trail Project. We're pleased that we received the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards that project.
Steve, that was a recreational trails grant through the state of Nebraska, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we've been successful in acquiring such grants in two, at least two previous projects, I believe, the Omaha Avenue project and the Riverfront Trail project.
Right. You know, we currently have the two seventy-five, what we call the two seventy-five undercrossing trail. It was a function of that grant and then the Johnson Park area was also a function of that grant.
Okay. Any questions for Steve?
Steve, I guess I was wondering, you know, in the initial notes it said it was a six hundred and sixty thousand dollar project and we had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, but we have also got an addition to that two-fifties, the three-hundred from northeast.
Correct.
Which brings our costs down substantially. And then, and that's for this budget year, obviously I wasn't around when the budget was passed, but is that in our budget?
Yes, it is.
That project to work with the county and the college. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Steve? Discussion on this council. If nothing else, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Okay, that moves us to the public hearings and related action portion of the agenda. Item number twenty-one, I will open this public hearing to consider the redevelopment plan for the Norpark Development LLC Housing Development. And to kick off discussion, Randy, could you give us some background, please?
Yes, Your Honor. The Community Development Agency accepted this plan on February fourth, twenty nineteen, and forwarded to the Planning Commission. On February twentieth, the Planning Commission held a hearing on the plan and voted eight to zero to recommend plan approval. Subsequent to the Planning Commission approval, the redeveloper revised estimated construction costs for the apartments from four point two million to five million, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars and revised the plan accordingly. On March fourth, the agency approved the revised plan and forwarded to the City Council. This revised plan is what's included in the agenda packet tonight. Redeveloper proposes a phased development consisting of two apartment buildings with twenty-eight units each for a total of fifty-six living units, five triplex slots with three living units per lot for a total of fifteen living units, eleven single-family attached structures with twenty-two living units, and twenty-eight single-family detached homes for a total of one hundred and twenty-one living units. This development is planned in five annual phases from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-three and the redeveloper proposes utilizing two million, eighty-five thousand dollars of tax increment financing to pay for site acquisition and preparation, infrastructure and other TIF-eligible expenses including capitalized interest. TIF will leverage an estimated seventeen million, seventy-six thousand dollars in other investments. Be glad to answer any questions and I see representatives from the redeveloper there also.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Any questions?
This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now.
Good evening, Mayor. This is City Council. Roger Dabical, I'm the CEO of Neighbors Northeast Nebraska, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Norpark Development LLC. Our two partners are with us tonight, Kelly Hurn with Progressive Dealers and Clint Mesfer with Mesfer Development Company. So those two organizations, as well as Neighbors Northeast Nebraska, have formed the Norpark Development LLC, so have taken on as this subdivision and providing more housing here in the community of Norfolk. How we got to this point is actually started two years ago, almost to the day. One day I was in the chamber office, meeting with Mark Zimmer, who is president of the chamber, and he approached me and asked, well, what is Neighbors doing about the additional need for housing in Norfolk? And he said, mine with the construction costs and what we have available as part of our organization to do something like that on a home is not really feasible. And I said, well, depending on what kind of ground is available and what its costs would be. And so from that point on, our conversation continued and Mark directed us to the Greater North Economic Development Foundation and the land that they own in this site. And so we were encouraged by the support from the foundation and started having conversations with any of the city staff and some of the council members about putting in some additional housing in the community. And so we did go and acquire that land from the foundation. At the same time, we were having conversations with New Core because they own adjacent land with us east there and they were impressed with what we wanted to do with that area and decided to sell that land to us as well. So it was kind of done in two stages. First was the park from the foundation and then acquiring additional land from New Core just took a little bit longer, so it's two years now and we're ready to keep this moving along. I will say that you're working with the staff. They're great, they're very supportive of our efforts. The Planning Commission obviously is supporting this sector as well. We do want to, our goal in this development, as Randy indicated, the breakdown of types of housing units, it's four different type of housing units, apartments, triplexes, town homes, and then single-family homes. So it's really a blend of all different needs, for the different needs of individuals to live in this area. Not only is this what we're planning right now, but we do have the potential to add two more apartment buildings, another fifty-six units down the road. At that time, we'll be looking at some other financing tools that we could possibly access, maybe even look at the new TIP plan on the four ninety-six funds to help with some construction costs that's down the road. We worked extensively with Mike Bacon. He did want to attend the meeting here, but due to the winter travels and he's had some health issues and he wasn't able to join us as well. So he's the one that really worked with the nitty-gritty details with Randy, putting together the redevelopment plan, of course. And just being the local nonprofit developer here in the local community, it's time that we are able to be a part of the subdivision here in Norfolk. We've done a couple in Columbus. We celebrate our twenty-fifth anniversary this fall and we're just really excited to get this subdivision picked off. We have already received bids for all the infrastructure to go into the subdivision upon approval of the TIP plan in a few weeks. We're ready to sign those contracts. Those contracts are really starting to be working, we have time, I've already worked out with them. And also with a plan like this of using TIP, how do you pass on the savings to the homeowner? And you can maybe look at some reduced costs for the builder, but really want to make sure that there's some way to pass those costs on to a homeowner. We're lucky to have some options to maybe have some type of homebuyer incentive that we might be designing to have some reduction in some of the costs there. Not really fine tuned those details yet, but we're working on that and we'll hopefully have something like that to be announced and that's going to be to make those homes a little bit more affordable and help reduce some of those costs of the homeowner to have some additional financing to purchase someone. And if you have questions, you know, my partner would be willing to answer some more questions if you do have any. But ask for your support to keep this development moving along and definitely appreciate your support.
Thank you, Roger. So five planned phases, right?
Yes.
For the project and the first phase includes fifty-six units altogether?
For the apartments, yes.
Right.
And then with the W N S, the other homes as well. So hopefully later this fall, we will start to see some construction moving on there and get some bases put in so we can have some homes that we can gather and build next year.
So Roger, you had mentioned that you're looking at ways to get some of that TIF money back to the buyer. I know you, I think you mentioned you hadn't settled on anything yet, but can you tell us what some of those might be?
I'm looking at maybe if there's some way we could have a few, some dollars to maybe help with some of the closing costs, to help bring some money to the table so the homeowner, homeowners can have some funds available to probably set closing costs. Not sure if we'll go above or beyond that, but it's not a large dollar amount for a homeowner, but if there's something we think will aid incentive and help homeowners purchase a home in that area.
So is that the only thing you're considering?
At this point, yes. We as Neighbors Northeast Nebraska have applied for some grant money. We'll be applying for some funds in April to see if we can handle some down payment assistance for some homeowners in that area. That's all to be determined and if we can get some grant funds for that, otherwise it's, there's no income restrictions for homeowners in this area and there are no grant funds used at this time to develop that.
Thank you. Other questions, Roger?
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now? Okay, see no one else? Planning Commission report, please. Look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty nineteen dash eighteen approving the redevelopment plan for the Norpark Development LLC Housing Development.
Your Honor, I move consideration of resolution twenty nineteen dash eighteen.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any further discussion on this council? Staff, any additional comments?
I just have a question. I don't know whether Steve could answer or Val. Looking at the overlay and I know when this first came out and I think Shane would probably really reflect more on it, I look at the diagram. Now, is that section a bluff? Are we going to connect the east bluff there or is that going to continue up to Pazwalk for the other ingress egress out of there? Because when you look at the overlay plat, it shows a connect, that bluff is going from whatever street this would be that, I don't know what the name of it is, but it's probably Chestnut going north and south and it shows bluff connecting with bluff that is there now. I understood that maybe that was not going to connect, but I see it on the plans. And I also see the road going further on up towards Pazwalk, I'd assume.
A bluff, bluff will not connect through. I believe it's.
Bluff connects and then they've made arrangements for.
I'm sorry, bluff, yeah, bluff connects. That's the north side, so bluff connects along the north side. I was thinking the next road down. And then Chestnut goes up and connects into Pazwalk.
Okay, I had thought that was not going to connect.
Go ahead.
That's what I remember, but maybe I'm mistaken.
Kelly Hurn with Progressive Dealers. Originally, we were just going to have an exit on the south and connect to bluff. Once we got started with the project, the concern was the traffic, so we did a traffic study, provided that to the city and we negotiated with the neighbors in the north on connecting with Pazwalk. So we would have three areas, north, Pazwalk, connect to bluff, and then south, that's ended up being, you know, sort of like three ways to get in and out.
Okay. Thank you, Kelly. Any other questions or discussion, council? If there are none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty nineteen eighteen is adopted.
Okay, item number twenty-three on a regular agenda. Entertain a motion to consider change order number one with Rutgen's Construction Incorporated for the Northeast Industrial Sanitary Sewer Extension Phase Two, Sanitary Sewer Extension District Number Two Fifty-One, resulting in a net increase of forty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents.
I'll make the motion.
Second, Your Honor.
Okay, and Steve, could you give us some background on this, please?
This would be the current project to take sanitary sewer out to New Core Road, ultimately terminating just to the east side of the New Core plant. This traverses, will also be connecting or providing service connections to several of the industrial areas there. What this is doing on the backside of the agenda item is a change order summary that lists the additions and deletions. One of the substantial changes there is a twenty-inch diameter born jackstill case that was upgraded in size due to railroad requirements. That one's basically a wash, forty-eight thousand dollar deduct, forty-five thousand dollar add. The other additions and subtractions, there's about a half a dozen of them in there, smaller, some smaller, some a little bit larger. Essentially changing over manholes to meet the connection requirements and wall space requirements between pipes that are connecting into the manholes. The project was set up with forty-eight inch manholes. Reality is we need sixty inch manholes or in one case a seventy-two inch manhole in order to allow the pipes that are out there, once they're connected, to have enough wall space between the pipes. The net, the net add to the project was, or the gross add was ninety-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars and ten cents. There was a substantial amount of deduct as well and the net increase is forty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions, council?
Just to note, that project did come in under bid, about eight hundred thousand, so we're, we certainly have the money in our contingency to cover that.
Good note. If no discussion, council, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Item twenty-four, look for a motion to consider acceptance of the bid from HCL Machine Works for a composter for the transfer station to recycle yard waste in the amount of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and authorization for the mayor to sign all contracts and documents related to the project.
Your Honor, I'd make that motion.
Second.
Okay, motion second. And Todd, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is, Rod Mercer went out to bid the replacement of our composter.
And just to make sure, Todd Bowing, I'll let you introduce yourself, Todd, so everybody knows who you are.
So the last composter was an HCL brand that lasted this life, term of life, and it's time for replacement. We bought that with a grant back in the day and we're getting twenty thousand, which is the max for this type of grant that we're asking for, so the city has to take in eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars towards that. We're expecting a seven-year life and we've been composting down there for twelve thousand, for twelve years and been working out good and continue to do so with grass and leaves coming in this spring. So answer any questions you might have towards that.
That is the item you put on your budget for the eleven thousand for this year?
Yep.
Where does the grant come from, Todd?
The Nebraska Department of Wildlife and Quality Trust. It may have a subcomponent towards equipment towards that.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, Todd. Any questions or discussion, council?
Not so much questions, I mean, it's a thirty-one thousand dollar piece of equipment. We're getting a grant for twenty thousand dollars. So if the thing lasts seven years, like was suggested, I mean, it's, to me, it's a no-brainer. I mean, we're doing what we need to do. It also, the citizens, if they don't, aren't aware of it, can go out there and pick up composts for free.
Yeah.
So it's, it's one of those, we win on both sides, so. It looks like we got some pretty good bids on it anyway.
Yeah, yeah. Well-stated, good partnership, good leveraging of resources to enhance a service to the citizens. Any other questions or comments, council? If there are none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Item twenty-five, for a motion to consider resolution number twenty nineteen dash nineteen authorizing the mayor to sign and submit a grant application to the U.S. Department of Agriculture for a rural business development grant for the establishment of a revolving loan fund and authorizing the mayor to sign all contracts and documents related to the grant.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration resolution twenty nineteen dash nineteen.
Motion in second. And Andy, could you give us some background on this, please?
Sure, Mayor and Council, no problem. What this does is an application, as you can see here, to submit to the USDA. This is something that we found a need for in Norfolk for small businesses, startups, entrepreneurs, to be able to, you know, if they have an idea to start a business in the community or else there's a need for some gap financing. This by no means will replace private financing. The businesses would find that it helps supplement and bridge some of those gaps that they might run into and also work as some capital for them as they're pursuing other financing. This is the first step, so it's an application. If we're approved, we'd have to bring forward a plan for approving loans. We'd have to have a committee in place and certain procedures. But the goal would be that this would just be a perpetual item that would regenerate itself, hopefully with a small amount of interest that would come back to help grow that fund over time. Certainly you can add to that fund in the future if you, if it's really heavily utilized. So this is a good program, something that's done in a lot of communities. And we did meet with the USDA staff and discuss this at length and it looks like this is a really good opportunity for Norfolk. The funding for this will come from our LB eight forty Economic Development Program. There are some funds available that our wonderful finance staff keep finding ways to stretch those funds out. So this is a great way to do that and will help carry it forward into the, into the future. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to help answer those for you.
Okay, all right, thanks, Andy. And again, the seed money for this fund should we be approved would come from existing LB eight forty Economic Development funding, is that correct?
Yes, some detail I left out, I apologize. The total amount that we're applying for would be a match fifty-fifty for a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So seventy-five thousand dollars would come from LB eight forty and then the grant would be for the rest of the amount. The way this application is designed and they review it, there's certain points offered. So we tried working with the staff there to make sure that we get as many points as possible when they're reviewing these, this application. So that's why the amounts are the way they are. We tried balancing all those things out and tried to come to a good number of what we think is possible.
I got a question for you. What happens when the LB eight funny, or LB eight forty ends? Isn't that twenty twenty, the actual?
Yeah, yes.
So how's that affect it?
Well, this, this funding, that funding will not, unless it's approved by the voters to continue, that funding would stop. So this is money we will have available before that ends. So we are putting it into a revolving loan. So there, after that, there will not be additional LB eight forty in there.
It's not an ongoing commitment.
It's not an ongoing commitment, no. This is a one-time funds that we have available, but carrying into the future, this is the seed money to start that and then it will just keep coming back to us for that.
Okay. I think it makes sense to explore the opportunity, again, leveraging money that we already have designated for economic development to make it go a little bit further potentially. Okay, if no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty nineteen nineteen is adopted.
Right, item number twenty-six, so I'd look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty nineteen dash four, approving a sidewalk waiver for Norfolk Wings LLC at two thousand and eighteen Crimson Drive. Resolution number twenty nineteen dash four was tabled at the January twenty-second City Council meeting. So we would first be looking for a motion to pull off the table.
And I'll make a motion to pull it off the table.
Second.
Motion second to pull this from the table. Any discussion on that, council? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative.
Your Honor, I'm going to make a motion to withdraw the motion on the table to amend resolution number twenty nineteen dash four to grant a sidewalk waiver for Norfolk Wings LLC on Twentieth Street and have additional conversations about a sidewalk waiver on Crimson Drive.
I'll second that motion.
A motion to amend?
No, withdraw.
Wait, motion to withdraw. And a second, any discussion on that, council? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Now we discuss.
Okay, original motion on the sidewalk waiver is currently on the table, so, um, at this point, Val, can you give us a little bit of background on this for public record, please?
I think I'll let Steve handle that. He's had the conversation with the property owner.
Uh, at the last meeting, then we discussed as a function of this original waiver, and I believe this waiver is requesting a waiver on both Crimson and Twentieth. Is that correct? We had been working with the, the ownership of Buffalo Wild Wings there to address the issue of pedestrians crossing the street, specifically kind of trying to get into that Buffalo Wild Wings area, maybe back into ShopCo. Um, and in, in assessing the site, it was, there were reasonable difficulties in getting the sidewalk down Twentieth just based on the need for boulevard or, or terrace, and then getting the sidewalk in there in conjunction with existing improvements on the site. We discussed a little bit there along Crimson Drive then, and do we, you know, are we, are we wanting to call it in all along Crimson Drive? Uh, certainly we could get it in along Buffalo Wild Wings. We might be able to get it in up to that next approach. Um, in working with Buffalo Wild Wings, we were, I guess we were tasked to go back and have a conversation with Buffalo Wild Wings about how, you know, were they amenable to just a partial sidewalk along the Crimson Drive frontage? How would they connect it into their parking lot? Um, I don't know if there's a document attached that you're looking at that shows how that connection would occur. They are. Uh, we have worked with them. We would bring the sidewalk to the ADA ramp on Crimson. It would, it would go up back to the property line, continue west about fifty, sixty feet, John. Um, and then it would turn and, and turn and go basically directly towards the Buffalo Wild Wings entrance. So I guess what we're talking about now is a partial waiver along Crimson, enough to get the sidewalk in so that folks could, uh, get to the parking lot uh, without having to traverse through a terrace, or grass, or ice, or snow. And again, I want to ask, there's no document there that they're looking at that shows this?
No, there is.
There is?
There is.
Could be in the package.
Okay.
She paid hundred ten.
So essentially, Steve, we'd be granting a waiver for a portion that we initially discussed, but still be requiring the sidewalk to come in to accommodate the crosswalk.
Correct. Uh, they are going to eliminate one parking stall so that we would be able to appropriately terminate, uh, into the parking lot, and people wouldn't have to kind of wiggle around a vehicle to get, you know, up, up to the storefront.
And it allows for future expansion when needed?
Right, and being placed appropriately at the right-of-way line where we put our sidewalks, that could be extended in the future to the west.
Okay. And Buffalo, they're in agreement?
Yes.
What we've talked, what you've talked about? And then number two, the city, we are going to put a crosswalk across?
Correct.
Two-seventy-five?
Correct. We're working with the DOT right now to get that design ironed out, and getting there to be PET button associated with that crossing as well.
You didn't see their request in the way for fifty years?
I didn't. Fifty years? Well, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Extend it on?
I wouldn't specifically recommend that. I think we should be able to call that in at any time.
I believe the agreement says that, that we can call it.
What?
Anytime.
Item two of the resolution says that city council reserves right to request the installation of sidewalks at any time regardless of this or any other waiver.
And so essentially, the waiver would be for along Twentieth, because I think we discussed that the engineering would just be somewhat complicated.
Correct, full, full waiver along Twentieth, partial waiver, if you want to call it that, along Crimson Drive.
The underlying motion on the table does require, uh, sidewalk all along Crimson, correct? So we would be looking to need an amendment to adjust to reflect what Steve just described.
Yes, we would need, right now we have Resolution number twenty nineteen dash four. Um, that was the introduced, uh, resolution. So we would need an amendment to that introduced, uh, resolution to reflect what, what Stephen has presented to us here today. So that would allow for a Twentieth Street, pardon me if I'm wrong here, to allow for a Twentieth Street waiver in a partial Crimson Drive waiver, but that there still needs to be some paving, there needs to be sidewalk on Crimson that leads directly into the parking lot of Buffalo Wild Wings. So an amendment to the, to the introduced resolution that says something of that effect. And then also to include, for staff to work with Buffalo Wild Wings on the exact placement. Okay, so we just need the partial sidewalk on Crimson, and it's a full waiver of Twentieth Street at this time.
Reflex what, what Steve just described. So we're looking for that motion if it is to be offered.
Your honor, I'd move that we amend the resolution to reflect the, allow, or provision for the waiver along Twentieth Street, and then for, also provision for a partial waiver along Crimson Drive to include all but the designated and indicated, um, sidewalks as shown on the attachment.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to the underlying Resolution number twenty nineteen dash four. We have just, for any further discussion on this? Questions, council?
I'm not normally a big fan of granting the waivers. I think sometimes we do too much of that, but this is very practical on what we're trying to do here. And I think it's a good thing, and that also we'll be able to, if we need to down the road, have them continue on with the sidewalks on both sides.
And that's what the remainder of the verbiage in the resolution provides for, again, it allows us to call it.
Gives us that option. I think that's well, well said. We've, we've been trying to, uh, swim against the tide of waivers that have been granted in the past, but I think as Councilman Weeblehouse said, this, in this instance, it made sense, certainly along Twentieth, to allow a waiver and to, um, work with the business and be sensible allowing the partial waiver on Crimson. I think it's, is reasonable in this case. So any further discussion or questions on the motion to amend? If not, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion to amend Resolution twenty nineteen four is approved.
Okay, Resolution number twenty nineteen dash four has been amended. We do need a motion to consider the amended resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Second that, your honor.
Motion in second to consider Resolution number twenty nineteen dash four as amended. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Resolution twenty nineteen four as amended is adopted.
Okay, item twenty-seven, for a motion to consider approval of ordinance number fifty-six oh four, providing for amendments of the legal descriptions contained in ordinance number fifty-five thirty-eight, which created gap paving district number five fifteen. As a note, ordinance number fifty-six oh four passed on first reading at the March fourth city council meeting.
Your honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance number fifty-six oh four on second reading.
Second.
Okay, motion in second. Uh, Steve, could you give us some background on this, please?
Mayor, council, uh, this is an amendment to add the side, side yard assessments that typically get done when we're doing paving districts where there is a side street. Uh, there is a, a process of prorating that side street out to the, uh, side lots, I guess. Um, this adds those side lots in there. Those side lots were included in the original assessment calculations. And so in our conversations with the residents along here, we had reached out to those residents, letting them know that that assessment was going to be coming, and had some conversation. So there is no, um, we have been in contact with these people that are impacted by this change. Generally, where, where we're adding this in is right at the very end of the side. And so I think in both cases here, it's about a, you know, about a thousand dollar assessment that would occur over fifteen or twenty years, depending on how we end up assessing this project. So it's a, it's a fairly minor amount compared to the other assessments that are going on related to the, to the street work, but nonetheless, that is city policy in terms of how we assess that out to those side streets. I would also point out, uh, I do need an amendment to the motion. NRS, the reference, the NRS, NRS reference, and an ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend ordinance number fifty-five thirty-eight pursuant to should read eighteen dash two thousand and one, Nebraska revised statutes.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions on that, council? So, Steve, I take from that we do need to amend to reference the state statute. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we would be looking for a motion to amend the underlying ordinance in order to reference, correct, state statute?
And again, that, the appropriate reference there would be section eighteen dash two thousand and one.
Your honor, I would amend my motion, or to make motion to amend that resolution to include that the coming compliance with state resolution eighteen dash two zero zero one.
Second.
Okay, motion to amend in a second. Any discussion on that, council? None, please vote.
Voting in favor of amending ordinance fifty-six oh four. Council members Grandquist, Langy, Merrill, Weeblehouse, Jackson, File, voting against the motion, council member Clausen, motion carries.
Okay, we'd now look for a motion to, uh, consider the amended ordinance number fifty-six oh four.
So move, your honor.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? None.
This is second reading.
Okay. No, if no further discussion, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska to amend ordinance number five-five-three-eight pursuant to section eighteen dash two zero zero one, NRS nineteen forty-three as amended, creating gap paving district number five fifteen in the city of Norfolk, ordering the construction of street improvements therein, and ordering the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance fifty-six oh four on second reading. Council members Grandquist, Langy, Merrill, Weeblehouse, Jackson, File, voting against the ordinance, Clausen, motion carries.
Okay. Item twenty-eight, with a promotion to consider ordinance number fifty-six oh six, creating water extension district number one twenty-three South Victory Road, providing for construction of a ductile iron water main together with necessary appurtenances located in part of the northwest quarter and the southwest quarter of section twenty-five, and the northeast quarter and the southeast quarter of section twenty-six, all in township twenty-four north range one west of the six PM Madison County, Nebraska.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-six oh six. Second.
Okay, motion in second, and Steve, once again, can you give us some background here, please?
Uh, before you hear, mayor and council, is the creation of a water extension district along South Victory Road. This would be extending water, uh, from the Amberwood apartment area and extend it west across Highway thirty-five, and then south along Victory Road, terminate a little bit to the north of Highway two seventy-five along Victory Road. The project would bring in, and, and bring us in with, into compliance with, with state statutes that compel us to bring sections of the city that are inside city limits onto city water and city sewer. And it would also provide for future development of properties along Victory Road there, east and west side, um, for connection to this in the future.
Thank you, Steve. Further infrastructure investment to accommodate development in that part of town. Any questions or comments, council? Okay, none, short title, please.
An ordinance creating water extension district number one twenty-three in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, referring to the plan's specifications and engineer's estimate in connection therewith, to provide for when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance fifty-six oh six on first reading. Council members Grandquist, Langy, Merrill, Jackson, Clausen, voting against the ordinance. Council member Weeblehouse, ordinance fifty-six oh six carries on first reading.
Okay, item twenty-nine, look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-six oh seven, creating sanitary sewer extension district number two fifty-two South Victory Road, providing for construction of a sanitary sewer pipeline along with all other appurtenances located in part of the northwest quarter and the southwest quarter of section twenty-five, and the northeast quarter and the southeast quarter of section twenty-six, all in township twenty-four north range one west of the six PM Madison County, Nebraska.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-six oh seven.
Second that, your honor.
Okay, motion second. Steve, anything to add here on the sanitary sewer district?
Uh, mayor and council, this would be the partner utility to the water project. Uh, again, this is going to extend sewer from the Amberwood apartment area across Highway thirty-five and then down Victory Road. Again, it brings us in with, into compliance with state statutes wherein we're compelled to provide water and sewer services for portions of the community that are inside city limits. It also opens up very, various sections along there for future development. Um, and we have been in contact with all landowners that this project would impact, as well as the water project.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any questions, discussion, council?
Not so much a question, just a note, okay, the important thing to remember here, brings us into compliance with state statute that says that you're inside the city limits. We're supposed to be providing you these two major utilities, so. Regardless of what may have happened in the past, it needs to happen.
Important and necessary requirement. Any other discussion, council? All right, short title, please.
An ordinance creating sanitary sewer extension district number two fifty-two in the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, establishing the outer boundaries of the district, designating the size, location, and terminal points, referring to the plan's specifications and engineer's estimate in connection therewith, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for publication of this ordinance.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in favor of ordinance fifty-six oh seven on first reading. Council members Grandquist, Langy, Merrill, Jackson, Clausen, File, voting against the ordinance. Council member Weeblehouse, ordinance fifty-six oh seven carries on first reading.
Okay, item number thirty, look for a motion to consider approval of Resolution number twenty nineteen dash twenty, approving the first amendment to subdivision agreement for Fountain Point addition.
Your honor, I'd move for consideration of approval of Resolution number twenty nineteen dash twenty.
Second.
Okay, and Steve, once again, could you give us some background on this, please?
Before you, mayor and council, is an amendment to the subdivision agreement for the Fountain Point project. Uh, the original subdivision agreement, I don't have an exact date in front of me, I apologize, was approximately fall of twenty seventeen. I apologize, was approximately fall of twenty-seventeen. Um, that subdivision agreement was also tied into a redevelopment agreement, uh, wherein there were certain requirements placed on the developer for, for that project. Uh, in general, redevelopment agreement points back to the subdivision agreement. Um, and I think the developer is here, so, uh, he'll have an opportunity to visit here in a little bit as well, and there's an adjacent landowner, uh, present as well this evening, and I believe he'll have some comments, too. What's before you, uh, the redevelopment agreement itself would have put the burden of all the improvements onto the developer, and, um, the developer had come, has come to us, uh, late last fall, um, talked about some of the burden on the project, and asked if we would be, you know, there was a, a way forward for the project, uh, to create a paving district for the Fortieth Street portion and Highway two-seventy-five turn lanes. Subsequent to that conversation, uh, we have gone into a contract with Olson's, uh, that contract was approved on January fourth, and then we did create the paving district itself, um, February fourth, I believe we created the paving district. Um, subsequent to that, in reaching out and having conversations with, with the adjacent landowner, with regard to the assessment that that would create against his property, um, I guess he, you know, that there was a desire to have some discussion, but what's before you in this, in this amendment to the subdivision agreement basically would allow the project to go forward as a paving district that would then create assessments to the Fountain Point project and to the adjacent landowner to the west. So what we're talking about, and what the subdivision, subdivision agreement amendment is, is for the purposes of creating that assessment district, and then assessing portions of the paving project to Fountain Point and to the adjacent landowner.
Okay. Thank you, Steve, for that background. Um, I do want to allow some time for discussion on this, so are there, are there, before we move into that, are there questions or discussion from the council for staff? Okay. If not at this point, I invite anyone from the public who'd wish to come forward on this to do so now.
Mayor and council members, my name is Gary Celine, and I'm the adjacent landlord of agricultural farm land next west of Fountain Point. Thanks for letting me address the council. You have been provided a letter of information which references item thirty, resolution two twenty-nineteen dash twenty. I am requesting that you vote no on this amendment to Fountain Point addition. The question I ask of the council is why, when you already have a signed contract by Fountain Point that says they will cover all, all cost of private and public improvements, why would you allow a change that puts the burden of expenses on one small agricultural farm landlord? My question is, why would you change the contract that you have already signed saying they will cover all costs?
Okay, thank you, Gary. Can, just for the record here, too, do you have that agreement that you're referencing in front of you right now?
Is it beyond the?
We, we have it, I'd just like to spell it out, what, uh, exactly you're, you're talking about.
Oh, I didn't read that.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Gary. You've referenced that, you referenced that document, I think we need to explain a little bit more about what that is.
Page two of a piece of the paper that I think that's, that I was talking about. And it goes down to section five hundred and one of financing. And it says, we tell three developers shall pay all cost for the construction of private improvements and public improvements. And I can read on, but that's the kind of rule that changed the, might be the judge.
Okay, any, and, uh, so everyone knows what we're talking about, this is a document from December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen, um, the Community Development Agency. Any questions for Gary and the council?
Mayor and counsel, I just was going to make sure that, um, the document Gary provided is, is accurate, it was part of a council packet, but the actual agreement that he's referencing was, uh, from August of two thousand and seventeen.
August, that's right.
Just, just to clarify that.
Yes, yep. We don't, Andy, we don't have a cover page on this document, we just have, um, certain pages within the enclosure, so it would be helpful if staff could explain what this document is and what it does in the process of, um, uh, these development plans and projects.
And I want to turn this over to Randy.
The document that Mr. Celine's referring to is the redevelopment agreement between the city and Fountain Point, and I think he's correct, this redevelopment agreement requires the redeveloper to put in the infrastructure, which would include Fortieth Street. I believe the redevelopment agreement contemplated this being done when they constructed the next phase, um, so yeah.
And, and again, to back up, this is all part of the, the TIF process, the tax incremental financing process.
Yes, there's a, another section, I don't have it in front of me now, that more specifically references Fortieth Street and refers back to the subdivision agreement. The subdivision agreement was consistent with the redevelopment agreement, saying that those would be put in at the redevelopers' cost.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Gary. Any, any questions?
So all the, that, all those, the improvements will be paid by a TIF bond, the TIF, correct? The TIF financing? According to this agreement, correct? Randy?
Yes, that's, was intended that these would be paid with TIF bond proceeds.
Welcome, anyone else offering, uh, wanting to offer comments on this to come forward?
Mayor, uh, city council, uh, my name's Mike Anderson, and I'm a volunteer representative for Fountain Point Development, and, uh, I represent, uh, forty positions and PAs with over two hundred employees, and, uh, we're asking for the amendment to the agreement, and I'd like to address Gary's comments on why we're looking to change that. When we started the process, the real moving parts, we had a different mayor, we had a different city engineer, and we had a different city administrator. Part of what we did, we needed a development agreement to get us started. When we started, we didn't have any idea what the cost or the scope would be on Fortieth Street. We didn't know how the, um, state would address the drainage that's coming down between the two properties, and, uh, so basically what we're asking for now in the amendment is to be treated like any other, uh, facility, uh, we would pay our part of the, the street, and, uh, a lot of what went into it also, you, you know, anytime you're doing a good-sized development, you've always got moving parts. We covered both sides of thirty-sevens for Dinkles because we knew we were going to have to ask them to cut their property in half to get us the sewer line that came from Twenty-Fifth Street to, over to our property. So a lot of it was done in negotiating, trying to figure out the best thing to do. Another thing, when we started the project, we were looking at putting in a lift station and pumping north across the highway, and our initial cost on that was, I think, three hundred and fifty thousand, and we offered that to the city, you know, to, if they, to help lower their cost to bring us the sewer. So, uh, uh, we would like to have you, uh, you know, focus on the task at hand, and take a look, and we would like to ask you to do what we feel is also in the very best interest in the city as far as the future development, um, and we'd like to ask that you pass the amendment that we have, and, you know, one of the things that changed quite a bit for us was we were putting in a, um, daycare, which I'm supposed to use the word child development, and we're putting that in right now, on the west side of the building, we've got a racetrack, and people try, that will try to get down to Madison Avenue when they leave, and we don't think that that's a safe situation for the people that are dropping off kids at the daycare. And, uh, so we wanted to, uh, go ahead, and we thought in the interest of public safety, it would be a good thing also to put in Fortieth at this time. Anybody have any questions?
Otherwise, Fortieth Street wasn't going to occur until later phases occurred, I take it that way?
Jim, I think right now it's called it Lot Four, which is on the southwest corner of Madison, that if we do Lot Four, that triggered paving forty. Now, we do, we are going to do the corner lot right on the roundabout, uh, we'll be putting in forty thousand foot of more medical on that corner, and we anticipate hoping to be able to get the puddings in sometime August or September, but, but that won't trigger Fortieth as well, it's the Lot Four. And on that lot, uh, we envision that that lot probably, right now with the closing of Golden Land, Norfolk's got a big shortage on skilled nursing beds, and we envision that lot as being a good site, or the skilled nursing beds sitting right beside Heritage with their, uh, assisted living and memory care. But right now, we don't have, uh, anything on that lot. We do have one doctor that has expressed interest in putting a twenty thousand foot building on that lot, but, uh...
And so without that happening, originally, nothing would have triggered Fortieth Street, and so this is working backwards, you know?
It is, Jim, you know, it is, and, and part of it was when, when we started looking at the traffic patterns with the daycare, and their daycare is set on the southwest corner of Madison where Fortieth would be, you know, we designed it, we put a turn-in lane for it, but we didn't know if, uh, workers being backed up, dropping off their kids, we just didn't know if that would be a safe situation, and so that moved it forward for all this, plus, we started at that building, that's going to be a thirty-five thousand square foot building, and right now, we're at about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, what we'll start this summer with a hundred units of assisted living and memory care at Fortieth meets going now.
Mr. Anderson, you'd said initially when the project started, you had talked with Dinkle, and you took the paving on their side in your negotiations with them, have you, before this came to us, do you made any, do you made any conversations with the adjacent landlord, Mr. Celine? I'm trying to pronounce the name right.
I have, uh, Celine's are great people, they're, they're good people, and I certainly understand where they're at with everything, and I easily empathize, but no, I didn't. Um, when, uh, Gary got a hold of the city, I called him right away, and then Gary and I met with Steve this afternoon, and, uh, all the conversations we've had have been very cordial, and, uh, they're good people.
I'm understanding your, your plight and needing to get this done, but I also, when I take a look, it seems quite a burden to be put on Mr. Celine for your advanced timeline. Um, do you anticipate having any discussions in the future?
With Gary?
With Gary?
Uh, I don't, I don't think so, because really, anything we do, it still comes down to this body, and this body making the decision on it. Um, I think that if you're writing the ag deferment, being able to get those costs today, whether that project gets developed in ten or fifteen years, would be a very good tool for him as far as cost would be. And we, we, you know, I, I, I didn't get a hold of Gary, and for that, you know, I apologize, I didn't figure this might happen, I didn't get a hold of him, um, you know, can we walk through everything? I mean, geez, I think we've got the ordinance, uh, on the February second meeting approved that, I thought we were good to go, so I would ask that you guys, you know, do what's in the better interest of the city, and, you know, see if you can grant us approval to go.
So if I heard you correctly, you wouldn't anticipate in the next couple of weeks having any further discussions or further negotiations on how this might get smoothed over with Mr. Celine?
I, I don't, I was glad to meet with him today, and I initiated the first call after he got involved. I called Gary, we talked for about forty-five minutes, and it was a very cordial, good call. I understood exactly where he was at, I could empathize with him, but I think it's a decision for this body to make as far as, you know, its infrastructure for the city, and, um, you know, I don't, I don't think that there's anything that, that could be done in that regard.
So you, then you don't feel as though the decision that was made in August of, uh, two thousand and seventeen should stand? The body's already weighed in on that particular decision?
I think it should be amended based off of, you know, when you started development, we had to have a document, put everything in motion to do the project, and when you do that, you don't know what's out there. You know, you guys run into it as much as anybody in the world, you run into issues when you start something, um, you know, so, you know, and I'll tell you this, you know, we've been, we've been very happy with everything the city's done, uh, we're extremely happy with the project, uh, everything couldn't have went better. We are, um, we're, I had a schedule of four months, and we're under budget, um, so everything's good. One other thing, Rob, that I might address on that issue is, is that, that, you know, I know Dinkles got a huge benefit in evaluation of their property by us locating there. We're a real asset for Dinkles, and we've had a great relationship, and I believe also by putting the quality of the development...
Pardon me?
I think by putting the quality to the development and the structure that's there, I think that we've helped Celine's as far as what they will be able to obtain to that property, and what the property value will be.
Thank you, Mike.
Um, and I don't know if it's, uh, uh, more of a question or a clarification of, you know, Mike, Mr. Anderson talked about an ag deferment situation thing that's out there, so I don't know if that's appropriate for him to respond to, or you, Steve, to respond to?
I can respond to that.
Because it's...
So I'd, I'd make a couple of comments here, that, the, about the total estimate for the project for Fortieth Street, and then there's going to be a turn lane on two-seventy-five for eastbound right turn in, into, in the, on the Fortieth. Current estimates have that at about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the assessment to the Fountain Point project would be about half a million, and the assessment to the adjacent property to the west would be around two fifty. The ag deferral, the property would qualify for ag deferral, it is currently ag-zoned, and so what ag deferral means is that assessment would be deferred, uh, the, there's no interest that, that accrues on that, that original balance until such time as the zoning changes or the use changes. Uh, one of those can trigger, would, would trigger that, uh, the assessment to start, and then when that does start, say it's ten years down the road, if it's a setup as a twenty-year assessment, they would have twenty years then to pay that, at whatever interest is set up.
So, explaining that again, Steve, the, the land currently, the Celine land currently is zoned... So, explaining that again, Steve, the, the land currently, the Celine land currently is zoned ag.
Currently zoned ag and used ag.
And the deferral means that until that zoning designation would change, the assessment would not, uh, would not be obligated?
Correct.
Well, um, I think this is an interesting situation we're in here. First off, I, there was a tremendous amount of support from everybody up here, and some weren't here, but, uh, for this project, obviously, because we extended the, our blighted study out and, and blighted that property and, and took up a lot of property in the process. And then the TIF bond was awarded, you know, so I mean, the support is a hundred percent behind you guys, obviously. This kinda came in out of left field, you know, boom, what, what's going on here? That being said, how do you, where do you weigh the, how do you weigh that on a TIF bonded project? On how you finance infrastructure, you see what I'm saying? Cause he, Gary, Celine's not eligible to do any TIF bonding, his, his property's not blighted. Isn't have that in his back pocket to, and even, we do have the deferral, or not the deferral, but of the, you, obviously, you don't have to assess the property until it is zoned in something else, R1, C1s, I, you know, whatever happens there. So that's the question, and how do we get that answer? I don't know. See, I mean, did, did we, cause in any projects we've done in the community as far as TIF goes, is the entire infrastructure funded through that bond? Or do we do assessments to the property adjacent?
So, I'm gonna not answer that question, um, and maybe somebody else. But what I'm gonna say is, in tonight's agenda pack, were two ag deferrals. And, and those properties may or may not be TIF-able, I don't know.
Well, I mean, you'd have to extend your blight, your blight study and extend it to blighted area, right? And who knows, that's not up for us to decide. My, my question is, how does that work? I mean, I've worked on TIF projects before and I'm, you know, and so that's where the, that's where like the, I guess you'd say the rubber meets the road, how do we figure out what's right here?
You know, Shane, I don't know if this is helpful, but when the blighting came about, we were able to get the blighting because Stu Hanson had the, I, I think at one time he had a salvage yard on the other side of the highway. And that was our qualification for the blighting. And can't remember the name of the guy that helped the city with it, I'm sure you guys know him. Does a lot of the, uh...
Studies, he did a lot of the studies for that. Bacon?
Yeah, Bacon.
Yeah.
He, I think so.
Was it Bacon?
Everybody talking about Tom?
Heard Houston.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
It was Tom.
Well, I think what, where Rob was going with this, and, uh, I'm not trying to read your mind, but...
Short look.
I think we need some serious information presented. I mean, it's gonna be tough in tonight's process to make a decision that's fair for you guys and fair for Mr. Celine, I feel. And I know you've got construction deadlines and you've got this stuff coming up, but I'm, I was kind of, I, I thought Rob was taking us in the direction of maybe tabling this. So we have ample discussion with both Mr. Celine and yourself and can consult with how the TIF works, um, you know, as far as assessing the property adjacent to TIF.
That, and, and Councilman, that's pretty much where I was headed with that. Especially when you start talking about the deferrals of, you know, of the, of the ag property.
Yeah.
That may or may not have a positive impact on Mr. Celine down the road. And I don't know if anybody's, if you guys really had the opportunity to talk about that.
Well, you can, yeah.
So I was kinda headed off in that direction, hoping that some more conversation might show us a resolution to the, to the problem.
Both properties have a unique situation.
Yes, they do.
And that's what's, you can look at it both ways. I mean, there's no, so my opinion's gotta be...
You know, we, we did discuss it this afternoon as far as the ag deferral. And Gary's concern is, and, and I want him to speak for himself as well, is, is that, is he gonna be able to get as much money or more money for his property with that ag deferral being out there? You know, I think that because it's on public record, I think that, that, that anybody that develops that knows that they're gonna have to extend Madison Avenue to do best. And, uh, so, I don't know, respectfully, Rob and Shane, I don't know, I, I don't know what good it would be to have discussions between us, because I don't see, we see the world differently. I see it through his eyes as well, and I have eyes with him. But it's, it's really an issue on what is in the best interest of the city for that development.
You know, I understand that and, and I get that and I appreciate everybody's viewpoint. But basically, what we have here is a contract, and contracts are wonderful things. They, they protect parties, you know, things writing, there's, there's no misunderstandings, and that's what contracts do. And I think we have a contract here, and unless there's some dialogue or some other kind of discussion, I think I'm gonna have to vote in to, to uphold this contract as it was written and presented to everybody.
We have had follow-up with attorneys, you know, questioning if we change, can we change the subdivision agreement and not change the CDA agreement, or do both need to be changed? And the answer back, and I'll let Danny kinda carry it from there, the answer back was, the only thing we need to change is the subdivision agreement. That what, what this states will control what the CDA agreement states.
You know, if, if the state were a part of issue, we wouldn't have any problem taping at Forty Street and moving it down on our property and charging them later to attach to it. We wouldn't have a problem with that. But the state's got it where they got it, and nobody knew that. There, you know, nobody knew at the time we did the agreement that what they were gonna draw to state. You know, you have no control over what the input is, um, you know, uh...
This, the childcare was part of the plans, uh, from the beginning?
No, they weren't. Uh, we had, we had a lot of feedback from our female workers. And we've got the largest percentage of female workers, they're all on the west side of town. And we've been in communication with Faith Regional, also doing the program to house the workers for their kids as well. And you're talking about a hundred and thirty kids, it's a bunch. And, and it's needed, I mean, it, it's needed. Initially, we were looking at putting in a daycare that would house thirty kids. And Faith Regional went out and did a study, and their study came in with about a hundred kids, but there were none. Now, I can't tell you that we'll, uh, make the agreement or make the deal with Faith Regional, but we've been in discussion with them. You know, and I could tell you this, and, and, you know, I, I don't, if, if, if you don't wanna put the street in, we're not gonna cover the, the cost for that whole street, we just won't do it, it's not fair. And I think the ag deferment is a fair thing, it won't cost them anything.
Well, that's kinda what I was seeing on the thing. If it, if it were not for the ag deferment, which I had not heard about until today that way, and, uh, my limited grasp on it, you know, is, okay, as, as long as it stays ag and it's utilized as ag, there's no cost to it. And, I mean, it's, it, it is a normal situation where both sides are assessed for paving. And, um, so the assessment won't occur, and at some, and it, and it has, the project right now has added, in my opinion, has added value to the properties that surround it, both, uh, the property, the, the Dinkle property and Mr. Celine's property. It's added value to it. And the installation of the street will add even more value to, to the properties. Along with the caveat is that, uh, um, the, the ag deferment keeps that cost away from being, it, being, having to pay, be paid for at this point in time, and it doesn't accrue interest. And, I mean, for me, I, I somewhat struggle with, with why the objection is out there to it, because it's, it's adding tremendous amount of value to that piece of property, um, regardless of who, who owns it, you know, as long as it's running under the ag deferment. And, and if it doesn't turn on over into, to commercial or whatever type or even residential development, say for ten years, you're still getting that, that, that paving assessment at, 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 uh, two thousand and nineteen costs. And I would wager to say that two thousand and twenty-nine costs are gonna be considerably higher than this, though. You know, I, I, the only other thing that I, I had struggled with and was going, well, okay, um, put it on in at some point in time and, um, uh, the, the property owners that, that don't share in the cost of it, don't get to use the thing, but that's not how this works, so...
Just, Councilman, just, uh, just so it is clear, um, if, if we do put this property into an ag deferral and Mr. Celine is, if he sells the property, um, the next, the buyer of the property, whoever receives that property, they would have, uh, two months, under the statute, sixty days, to request an ag deferral. And so just as we've seen tonight, it's, most likely it would be on our, on consent, assuming that they have, um, it's ag zoned and it's currently being used as ag. Now, if he has, if he transfers it to somebody who, you know, has the intention of developing it into another, a different use, then that's where that will kick in, but the change in ownership...
Right.
It, it would just be the next owner's job to apply again for the ag deferral, which really isn't, it's not a complicated process. It is something that will have to be done if ownership is transferred.
And essentially, it's not really an encumbrance. And as long as it stays ag, and if, if it changes from ag to something different, yeah, then, then it comes in. But it comes in, you know, if it's ten years from now, it comes in at twenty nineteen prices, so...
And so if he does it at twenty nineteen and somebody buys it that's not gonna keep it ag, they can turn around and say, well, you owe two hundred, just for numbers, say two hundred and fifty thousand. So I'm gonna take that out of what I, what you think they're gonna answer.
I, I guess that I, that is possible, Councilman, but by the same token, by that time, it, it's also hard to kinda quantify the benefit that, you know, depending on what this new, you know, this is all hypothetical, depending on what that individual would wanna put on that property, it's hard to kinda ascertain the benefit at this time of, you know, what kinda benefit there would be with the Fountain Point development right next door. So it's, it's hard, you're, you're absolutely right, that, that could be a question, but then by that time, if, if it's paved and, you know, we don't, we can't really measure the benefit at this, at this time, at least I can.
And I, I mean, I, you came up here and both these gentlemen, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Celine are great people. I mean, honestly, I know both you guys, just, so, that's why for me, this is so hard, because you're looking at a, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment and on your end, what was it, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment? And there's answers out there that we don't, I don't feel like we have yet, and that is the fact that if you have a TIF project, who's responsible for the bonding of the infrastructure? You know, and how do you answer that without a TIF attorney?
I'll touch on that a little bit, and Randy can, can jump in here, he's got some more history on the background. But, uh, prior to Fountain Point, uh, at one point, we had Meadow Ridge, um, that infrastructure, Randy, when that was originally set up. And I'm thinking of new areas. A lot of the TIF projects that have happened have been where you, you're working within an existing area where there's infrastructure. It might just need to be replaced. Um, Randy, is that an accurate statement, that we haven't had a whole lot of new extensions as part of TIF? And you can maybe give a little more background on that, prior to, to maybe where Fountain Point is?
Well, normally, when we have a TIF project, the TIF pays for the infrastructure and we don't do assessments. That isn't always the case. Like I see Ben's an example where we're doing assessments and those assessments will be paid with the TIF. This is somewhat different. You've got infrastructure going in outside of the development that's gonna benefit both properties. I'm trying to think if we've had something like that exactly, situation happen before or not. I, I can't recall it, but we might have. So this may be somewhat unique. But normally, the project is, infrastructure is paid for with TIF and not special assessments. So I say this is...
And then, but, see, then Jim makes a good point too, and then we've got, Mr. Celine makes a good point, Mike makes a good point. So, in my opinion, in my humble opinion, I guess I'd say, is this is a big deal for a decision tonight. And I'm not quite comfortable with what, where we're, where we're at with all of the information. I would like to have a chance to speak with both gentlemen and, uh, you know, if that is in a subcommittee forum within the next two weeks, to get this thing right for both parties, so that we've got a successful project that keeps me successful. We have a individual out there that is gonna be placed with a bunch of burden that he didn't know about till, what? You know, he, obviously, wasn't your problem to contact, and that falls on us, you know, a little bit. So, I just would ask that we could have just a two-week timeframe to maybe shuffle through the weeds a little bit and figure out. And I'm, I'm asking that, Mike, if you're okay with that, you know, and Gary, I know you drove all the way up here today to be here and talk to us, but, uh, that's, I know it's, it messes up your construction schedule, and we're trying to stay away from that. But honest to God, I think this is the first time, um, some of these guys have heard of, heard this, what's going on here. And, and so I just, I don't wanna see a decision made tonight that's gonna impact your guys' development, or that gentleman, without, you know, properly laying this stuff out, like Randy's talked about. Maybe he has seen projects that have had TIF and done assessments. You know, can we look at some of that, because as you move forward, and as we've, we've expanded our blight study throughout Norfolk quite a bit, and we have a lot more blighted property, you're gonna have more of these issues arise. I'd like to get it right tonight, or maybe two weeks from now, so that we don't have to sit, you know, as we move forward, we're, we're, uh, and do more projects down the road. We have set our, we've set the precedent that we wanna set.
I would, I would tend to agree with Shane. I think that in this particular situation, we're not gonna do anybody a favor, um, by not turning over every stone, looking everywhere we can for possible solutions to, to this issue here. I would hate to think that two or three weeks down the road, we did find something that would work better, we found something else out. I think that would be doing everybody a disservice and, and with that, I'm going to, um, offer that we table this for two weeks.
Second that.
Certainly.
Um, hey, Dave, one other thing I wanted to say was, just have located agreements in agreement. We never amended the agreement before. When the city asked us, and that was through Dennis and Shane, put the storm sewer in, we put it in. And thank God we did, because it got tested this week and it performed admirably, you know? We put that in, we didn't ask for any more money, we covered the cost. They had other changes they made on the cowboy trail. We didn't, we didn't feel that we needed to go to the city and say, well, okay, we oughta amend the agreement. We were good with it. So, I get what you're saying, Dave, but what we've given on the other part as well, equally, I, I didn't, I didn't, I just wanted to make sure.
And I just wanna be clear in my mind that the need for Forty Street was triggered by the addition of the childcare plan. And, and was dictated by the state of Nebraska DOT saying, Street has to go here?
No, it wasn't dictated by the state of Nebraska. Basically, it's, it started out as a thirty-five thousand foot project, which now's gonna end up being a hundred and twenty-five thousand with a hundred units of assisted living. When, as we grew, it became evident, but the one that probably stood out the most was when we looked at daycare. Now, if you want us to pull the daycare out of there, you tell those gentlemen that their workers won't have it, I'll pull it out. I'll pull it out. If it's a public safety issue and we can't have the daycare, we can't have the daycare. Then we never have to do this building, so...
Well, that was my question, what? What, 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 yeah, what triggered you coming in, asking for the change?
The outstanding growth of what went out there. And also part of it, Josh, a good question, when you pull out there and you see the parking lot and you can walk it and you can see the entrance points on the building, then you understand how cars are gonna shoot through that lot. Sometimes it's kinda hard to see it with a blueprint in front of you.
Yeah, well, that was my follow-up question. Was there anticipation, could there have been anticipation of that within the initial plan? And I understand there's a lot of moving parts with these projects, including the housing part of this that didn't materialize.
Need a second.
Is that, was the formal motion made?
I need a second.
Motion to table? And a second? And no further discussion? So we have a, Councilman Merrill made the motion to table. Councilman Weaverhouse seconded, no further discussion.
You're on one question. It's a table with the sunset on it of two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
Hey, Jim. I flew into this meeting and I'm gone on Wednesday for ten days.
Okay. Is our next meeting two weeks or is it, are we a five-week month?
No, it's two. I think it's the first.
Okay.
It is first of April. I would, I could amend that, that motion to April fifteenth.
So, Mike, sorry, go ahead.
Can't be talking anymore at all.
Well, we have to determine whether there's a solid motion on the table, on the motion to table with a specific date in mind. We haven't gotten to that point yet.
Since that was already motioned in second, we probably have to vote on the table. And then if it's not necessarily an amended motion, you have a remotion. Is that right?
I'm allowing for a specified date on the motion to table. April fifteenth?
I would, I would, yes, April fifteenth. It's one real quick question.
We've got both gentlemen here this subcommittee tomorrow. So they can, we don't have to table it for two weeks, or we can keep it in two weeks schedule.
Well, that didn't, we could do that without adjusting the date.
I will, I will second.
There's a motion to table.
There's a motion put forward to table this until the April fifteenth council.
Until the April fifteenth council meeting and a second.
I'll second that.
And there's no further discussion allowed. Please vote.
Voting in favor of the motion to table this item is Councilmembers Granquist, Merrill, Weaverhouse, Jackson, Clausen file. Voting against the motion, Councilmember Langy, motion carries.
Item thirty-one, for a motion to consider approval of resolution number twenty nineteen dash twenty-one authorizing the mayor to sign the interlocal cooperative agreement to become a member of the Nebraska Community Energy Alliance, authorizing permission to apply for a grant and authorizing designated signees for the grant.
I'll make a motion for consideration or approval of resolution twenty nineteen dash twenty-one.
Second.
Motion in second. And Steve, could you have some background on this, please?
Mayor and council, this would be an agreement to join the Nebraska Community Energy Alliance. This was formed back in about twenty fourteen. There were nine original members. Those are listed on the agreement. Since that time, there are, have been thirty-four additional members added to the alliance. Generally, they're communities or counties, in some instances, they're entities. UNL has a fairly reasonable presence on there with some of their institutions. The agreement on here, and it talks about board members and the addition of board members to it, you can, there's multiple, two ways primarily to join. You can either join and become a voting member of the alliance, which is what I have before you here, or you can become a non-member, non-voting member of the alliance. The membership of a thousand dollars would allow us a vote. As grant opportunities come in, we'd be part of the alliance and could vote appropriately then. The other five hundred dollars that's associated with the fifteen hundred dollar fiscal impact, it would just be the one-time thousand dollars, and then it's five hundred dollars for every grant that we would apply for. And I would imagine that might be one grant a year, one grant every other year. The grants are fairly substantial. Could be anywhere from two, three, four, five hundred thousand dollars. Generally, those grants are used for renewable energy projects, primarily electric cars, solar, charging stations. Those tend to be the focus of the Energy Alliance. It's my understanding that this alliance is how the Volkswagen exhaust emission program and the suit that was taken against Volkswagen and those dollars that come back to the United States and the individual states, this is the program that those dollars come back into for grant purposes, and then we can apply for those dollars. I think the mayor's got some background on what this is as well, but I'd certainly answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Steve. Primarily, this allows us to potentially seek grant funding from that Volkswagen settlement fund that this alliance of different communities is seeking to incorporate a network of electric car charging stations throughout eastern Nebraska, particularly along different corridors, Highway eighty-one, Highway seventy-seven, seventy-five. That's, that's the extent of my knowledge of the alliance and why they're coming together at this point. Basically, an organized, coordinated effort within Nebraska to make use of those Volkswagen settlement funds.
Since, since formed in twenty fourteen, I believe, they've been awarded two point five million, a little over two point five million in dollars. So the alliance itself goes out to seek grant dollars. Once they get those grant dollars, then they distribute those back through local grants that we would write for. If the Energy Alliance was to dissolve today after five years in existence, my understanding is the members would get a majority of that initial membership back. So of that thousand dollar fee, you know, you might get eight hundred back today if they were to dissolve. So I'm not exactly sure how long this, the alliance will exist, if it'll just until the grant dollars dry up or if it'll potentially go on forever, but.
Steve, do you know, has the alliance engaged in any community solar programs at this point, or do you know that?
I'm not necessarily familiar with that. As I recall, Fremont got last, last year received a little over five hundred thousand in grants. They used that to buy for electric, for participation, to purchase four electric vehicles, I think two charging stations. And I recall they were going to use two hundred thousand of that towards their next solar project.
So Steve, the original group is nine, and then you said there's thirty additional, either voting or non-voting members added to it. So is when the grants come on in, is it something that is divvied up between the now thirty-nine members or how does that, or it comes in and then it's warded back out based on?
The individuals have to write.
You have to make a application for the grant money and however many of the, of the thirty-nine members are actually voting members, they vote on who it goes out to?
Correct.
Okay, and it costs you five hundred to make that application?
Correct.
For, for that potential, in Fremont's case, potential five, half a million dollars, so.
That's correct. The next round of grants is expected to come in midsummer. We'd be writing grants against that, late summer, early, early fall.
So there are potential synergies with what we're doing with the community solar, perhaps, you know, electric charging station at the solar array or whatever the case might be. This alliance helps, I think, coordinate more global efforts within the state to strategically place those charging stations along different corridors.
Yes. So this is administered some point in way, what kind of staff is there, or, I mean, is there some additional funds out there that have to be allocated from each of them to take care of staffing?
From each of the members. I believe the grants are covering the staff. There's no additional requirement from us.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. There wasn't going to be a, say, we get into it and, and so we're, we're a member and then suddenly the coalition, for lack of a better term, decides that, well, we're going to hire ten people and give them full benefits and da-da-da-da-da-da, and suddenly there's a million-dollar budget item that has to be covered by the thirty-nine entities.
The alliance has not shared that that type of potential exists.
And if it did exist, we'd be able to back out anyway, I take it? Or if that came forward, it would be a choice to be able to back out, I'm assuming?
I would, I'd have to, I could, I could contact them and ask, but I would imagine there's got to be a process to terminate our membership.
Well, Steve, you mentioned it was a one-time fee?
Yes.
So if we did need to back out for any unknown reason, that's all our exposure would be going forward?
That's correct.
Typically speaking, I know those grants would, would have a percentage in there for the administration of that grants, how they're typically written, but you don't know for sure whether that's the way it is or not.
No. I believe we've kind of structured this potentially, as we were working with, working this agenda item up and having some discussion internally with Danny, it is written currently as a draft. I think there's opportunity there that we could answer some of those questions and bring that back.
Well, I was gonna, I was just gonna say, the opportunity exists to get those kinds of questions answered before we mail the check.
Sure.
Okay. Well, you don't mail them anymore. I guess you would electronically transfer that money.
I would almost think there'd have to be an option to terminate membership for any reason without obligation. But those are the things we can research before. As Councilman Merrill said, sending the check.
Reading through this, this interlocal cooperative agreement on here, that's already all in place, is that correct?
That is correct.
So it's not, they're not looking for us to add people to it or make one here?
No.
That would, that would be a burden on the tax, on our tax if we had to pay it here.
No.
That's the way, the first time I read it, too, that's the way I read it, so.
There's a section, section number eleven talks about withdrawal of member. So you can withdraw, you just forfeit your future opportunities for funding through there.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, and please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative resolution twenty nineteen twenty-one is adopted.
Okay, and to conclude, we do have the opportunity to allow for public comment. This is a chance for any member of the public to come forward to discuss anything that might be on their mind. Going, going. All right, the opportunity is gone. We will close this session, this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. Have a good evening.